Come on, get that, get that.
Yeah. Because they were trying to go to like pretty much city. They got like.
Man, that's what I was going to say. I'm good with the day.
Oh, yeah.
That's the latest avenue. Track was wide. I think it's dog food. Oh, oh.
Now, I.
Do it like.
Oh, oh. Oh.
That's.
Just move like tunnel. Yeah.
I hope it is.
All right. Backing over there.
And why not? Yeah, yeah. Trees and little. Oh. Oh, yes. Put it on. You have a. Drive straight. I said. All right. That's a true. Good. Yeah. Like seven five.
Four. I think it right there. All right, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Seven five. Yeah. Ever since you.
Oh, but they get all rise.
Oba County Commission Meeting is now in session. The Honorable Ralph Puckett presiding. I got to say the United States of America, great state of Tennessee, and this honorable committee.
But Sheriff, what do you raise for the prayer?
Yes, sir. Let's pray. Most gracious heavenly Father God, we've come before you, Father, as a body, protecting the assets and, and making decisions according to the citizens of this county. Father, we just pray that you'll be in those decisions, that you'll just guide us and direct our thinking, Father. Keep everything together and, and help us be together as one, Father, with you as Almighty God, directing our thoughts and directing our, our words. Heavenly Father, just pray that you'll bless this body, bless this county, state, and the United States of America. And Father, we just pray that not our will, but your will ultimately be done, Father. Thank you for this day. Thank you for the blessings of it in Jesus' name, the Father. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir. Sheriff, you lead us in place.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is.
Yeah. Come on, man. Still ain't showing me presents.
Yeah.
Still ain't showing me presents.
I didn't see present, no.
Mayo's absent.
Didn't show me that.
Thank you.
Come around. This is hard. Come on, Dale. Wake up over there.
That one off here.
Get everybody eighteen.
What all about that? What all about that?
Do it again. They updated our program.
Okay, do it again.
Please.
They did upgrade.
They did. Target prices without all of them.
I'm so good. No, you didn't get it. Hey, you need punch your buttons again.
Well, my list is absent.
You need to punch it again.
He's died twice.
We gotta fix it up whole day.
All right, now. Counted the room. There's eighteen present and thirty absent.
Eighteen present, three absent, who we have before. However, you received a copy of the minutes from the previous meeting, and any correction or addition did be made. There's no correction, is there? Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Danny Jowers.
We're not getting that then. Danny Jauer. James Gray. All in favor? Or yes? Eighteen yes, nine opposed. Previous minutes are approved. Okay, we're better, we're ready to get to work.
All right, first item we're gonna talk about is a library request. Two requests on here from the library. The first is for a new six ton rooftop gas package unit. Uh, the county portion is eighty-four thirty-three thirty-three cents. The city's portion is four thousand two hundred sixteen dollars and sixty-seven cents. And the second part of this is a new twelve point five ton gas package unit. County's portion is two, uh, two-thirds, one-third with the city. Thirteen thousand seven sixty-six and sixty-seven cents. The city's portion is sixty-eight eighty-three thirty-three. And the city's already voted on there's one-third, so bring in a form of motion.
City where made the motion. Frasier made the second. Some discussion on this. Uh, Mr. Puckett, or Mr. Sinclair. I saw in the messenger, there was, in the city council, there was a discussion about a request for a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars for some doors. The city approved their portion for the library. You aware of that? I know it didn't dream it up.
No, voted on the doors.
Long time.
What about it?
What would we do then? Enough for the long.
Well, that windows.
Well, not even though, it's always been in every year.
Thing twenty years old.
Right.
Back there, budget say something, that's all I can remember.
He didn't make it. Fourteen thousand dollars, damn doors.
Anybody else have anything? Oh, and several motions. Thank the Lord.
Commissioner, I was.
Need to.
You're right. Oh, yeah, I'm getting mighty well.
Eighteen yes.
Fall in.
Motion case. Controller's budget approval letter.
Uh, the next item is from the Tennessee Comptroller of the Treasury, uh, for Jason Emanpower, the Comptroller of Tennessee. Letter acknowledges receipt of a certified copy of the fiscal year twenty-two point six budget. The, uh, Comptroller has reviewed the budget and have determined that projected revenues and other available funds are sufficient to meet anticipated expenditures. Uh, local officials are required to ensure the budget remains balanced throughout the fiscal year, and all maintenance effort requirements are met. Um, if you have a chance to read that, there is one, one comment in there I'll, I'll bring out. Um, structurally balanced budget. During the, the view of the budget, we noted that it appears that the general purpose school fund is budgeted to use a portion of the fund balance to pay for recurring expenditures. Sound financial management calls for recurring expenditures to be funded by recurring revenue. The use of fund balance does not make the fund disabled for fiscal year twenty-two point six, but they do bring this to the attention of the governing body to prevent future financial instability. That was one comment that is in there. The other one was a timely adoption of the budget. They would like for Oba County to submit that before budget, uh, year of the following year. So, uh, we did make the fifteen days, but they would actually like to even get it earlier than the end of the year. So this is just home, um, just tidying up. We have to just approve this letter from the Comptroller.
Mr. Sinclair made the motion, Mr. Gray was second. Any discussion on this? No discussion, we'll go ahead and vote. Eighteen yes, nine opposed, motion case. Thank you, sir. Sheriff Surplus reports property.
On behalf of the sheriff, he's listing falling vehicles as surplus property. This is in preparation for a future sale. The two thousand eight International Bus, VIN number six oh five one. A nineteen ninety-nine Honda four hundred, uh, VIN number twelve oh three. Two thousand fourteen Ford Explorer, VIN number zero three five nine, and a seventy-two inch Bushog with the VIN number sixteen twenty-five.
Mayo made the motion, Mr. Stanford made the second. Anybody have any discussion on this, Mr. Jauer?
I've been, uh, talked to, uh, Director Carr of the EMA about this. This was, I actually been trying to get rid of this trailer for about six months now. EMA was donated a trailer from the Health Department. Uh, it was severely damaged. I don't know how they talked me into taking this thing, but the top of it had been crushed in, and it leaked. And I would like, there's no objection, to add that to the list. It didn't cost the taxpayers of this county any money. This came from the State Health Department. And, um, so we had nothing tied up in it, but it's, it's got to go. So I'd like, if there's no objection, I add that to the list.
Any objections to his, yeah, a form of a motion there, Mr. Jauer?
Hmm. I'll, I'll, I'll go ahead and amend it then. Amend his report. If I can hit amend this, I don't like to do that.
I'm, I'm accepting it.
Okay.
All right, motion to amend by Danny, Danny Jowers.
Second. Hold on amendment first.
Could be voiced my first.
Go ahead and vote on that.
If it's working right. Okay. So now we're voting on the motion to amend. Correct?
It does, yeah.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Bondra, you've had a request to speak.
I do.
Okay.
I'm not sure where we stand at the airport right now, but we have added the past extra equipment that we need to get rid of as well. How long do we have before we could add maybe something to it, like Danny has done? I don't know whether we have something or not, but I would check with the airport manager to make sure.
What, what, how, you have a, what do you have a, so?
Look, I'm not prepared to say.
That's good. It's just getting rid of it.
I, oh, it's like you can bring it up to any commission meeting.
Okay.
Budget meeting, put it on the agenda, or put it on the commission.
So it's, it's not a real big deal.
Yeah.
Thanks.
So once again, we're voting on the motion to amend.
Go ahead and vote. Eighteen yes, nine opposed, amendment passes.
Now, the original motion?
Full motion.
All right, here's the one where I added the trailer donated to the EMA by the Health Department.
Motion made by Kenny Mayo and Mr. Stanford second. On this motion. Anybody have any discussion on that? Any none, go ahead and vote. Eighteen yes, nine opposed, motion case. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hudson Road, Mr. Flair.
May sixteenth of twenty-two, the County Commission voted to, uh, to swap some property, which is Hudson's Road for the, the, uh, hundred forty-four thousand dollars worth of, of roadwork that's gonna happen on there. Uh, we got a new estimate, twenty-two five, we had three, three quotes, anywhere from seven hundred thousand up to a million dollars to do that same work. This is not something that the taxpayers or the county, anybody in the county would, would expect us to, to do. So based on that, I, I'm making a motion that we rescind the original motion, uh, the original motion, and, uh, have the mayor do a quick kind of claim back to the owner of that property.
Mr. Sinclair made the motion, Mr. Omen is second.
Mr. Chairman. Uh, Mayor Carr, uh, again, attempted to be transparent, transparent possible with the Hudson's family, put the family on notice of this action today. Um, uh, Mr. Bedford Dunham, it is related to the Hudson's. Uh, I asked him to talk to the Hudson's family about this issue. Uh, again, I'm not recommend, I, I'm not discouraging you from proceeding with this motion at all, uh, but I did want you to be aware that the Hudson's family, if we rescind the two thousand twenty-two agreement, does intend to hire attorney and attempt to seek damages against the county. Uh, I just want you to be aware of that, um, that we may have a, a fight on our hands for a later day, so.
The, the, how many acres was the state? Six acres?
Six acres.
Okay.
Plus the portion of, it was for the road also. Six acres of twenty-five thousand.
Who's been getting the, uh, the, the rental from the property for the last, since twenty-two?
The county's never received. We have a settlement in farm, and it's like they always, the, we haven't got. The tax, the appraisal on the six acres we received is a hundred and two thousand, um, which is less than we thought the property was worth at the time, but, uh, and obviously the cost to build the road, uh, greatly exceeds what we thought it was gonna be at the time. Uh, this issue presented three years ago.
I say something?
Sure.
My understanding, the thing was bid, what, less than sixty days ago? And I believe the low bid was around four hundred fifty-seven thousand dollars, and the next bid was six hundred? So where are we getting to a million?
Well, the lowest bid was six hundred ninety-nine thousand, almost seven hundred thousand dollars. The next bid was nine hundred sixty-three thousand dollars, and the next highest bid was eight hundred sixty-seven thousand dollars. So the lowest bid was seven hundred thousand and just a few dollars shy of a million, that's the free bids.
Well, it's interesting, because I asked, uh, one of them what they bid, and I had their comments, and it was like six hundred and four fifty-seven. That's why I'm here to find out this information. Okay, that must been the, was that on the base or the alternate? Okay. I guess my question is, you know, of course, when the project came up, the Hudson's family had basically been asked over and over for this to come about. So I finally agreed, in good faith. The road was halfway cut as far as dirt, so tiling had to be done prior to that to keep the water out of it, so we wouldn't be in the, right away of the road. They took out some trees and left them piled up there. Those had to be buried. But Mr. Barry Reeves is one that farmed it. He'll be able to tell you what the differences are. There were two potential buyers, ones especially had agreed to almost two and a half, three acres, waiting to see where the road went through. So there are damages. And that makes you kind of wonder if the county says we're gonna do something, and then we turn around two years later, or three, say, nah, we're not gonna do it now. Had it have been done, I don't know what the cost would have been. But, you know, it's, I kind of wonder if we, if y'all approve something, two years, now, we just go back so we don't wanna do it? I'm just asking those questions. Thank you.
My question, Mr. Sinclair, in your research, how did we go from a hundred and forty-four thousand to these numbers we're hearing today? Where did the original hundred and forty-four thousand dollar estimate come from?
That was from your prior superintendent of Highway Department.
Thank you.
We have it.
That's all I got.
And, and if the estimates we were, are, were receiving were close or approximately equal to the value of the land, I wouldn't have as much objection, uh, going forward, but, uh, with the, with the, with the vast difference, then I, then I'm afraid we're getting to an area where the, the project is just void against public policy, because we would be benefiting a private tax, uh, or private citizen, uh, by building a road, uh, that costs far in excess of the value of the land.
You're right at a hundred sixteen thousand dollars an acre, if you swapped it out, so. At the lowest bid, seven hundred thousand, so.
Anybody else?
Yeah. Cue to speak, man.
Oh, yeah, there you, Danny Jauer.
I guess what bothers me the most about this, of course, I wasn't on the commission when this was agreed to. But, when we agreed as a body to do this, the costs were obviously at a hundred and forty-four thousand. Now, whether that's low or high, I don't know. What bothers me the most is why we didn't do it then? Why, why did this drag on for years when we agreed to do it, and if we'd have done it at that time? Um, but I agree with Mr. Conley, that's, I don't know what the hell that's gonna play out in the court. But we can't put a road in for, you know, I kept hearing it was only four hundred thousand. That would, that would have been a little possible, and you're talking about eight hundred thousand dollars. Then you say, Mayor, seven ninety-nine, might as well say a hundred thousand. That's, we gotta look the rest of the taxpayers in this county in the face and say, we just spent that kind of money on this road, that obviously the city's gonna annex just like that, and they're gonna have a paved road, and they, they're going to benefit. And, um, I, you know, we should have, that's my point, we should have built that road when we said. Okay? Now, that's my point. But now we're back to this, where we're eight hundred thousand. I can't in good conscience vote for a project that's gonna cost us eight hundred thousand. My bottom line is somebody would be held accountable if we didn't build that road down. That's, that's all I got, Mr. Chairman.
Anybody else have anything? Anybody else have anything, we'll go ahead and vote. Everybody vote.
Uh, yeah.
We got, uh, sixteen yes and two no. Open case. Now we're ready for the courthouse to start.
All right, uh, I'm gonna make the motion, but I'm gonna let the mayor talk after I do this, he's got some comments, and he's, I have to. This is authorized in matching funds for ECD historic development grant program for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. The government body of Oba County has committed itself to the improvement of the community that it represents, wishing to make application for the project. After the proper, uh, property eligibility by ECD program guidelines. Sorry. Said government body wishes to make application for up to five hundred thousand, and grant funds to implement unfortunate, uh, improvements and understands the municipality will be accountable for providing a match rate of no more than ten percent. The match rate was determined by ECD. We get a five hundred thousand dollar grant will be ten percent, which would be fifty thousand. We can get a grant up to five hundred thousand. I'll bring it for a motion, and I'll, the, the mayor's asked to speak.
Good morning, everybody. Um, this, uh, is a grant opportunity that we have. We, I always talk to the Northwest Development District folks, because they handle a lot of our grants, and they come up with grants for us and help us find these, and so they have, have done so on this one. And this one is of great interest to us because of, uh, what it entails, and it's, it's an opportunity for us to get a five hundred thousand dollar grant, and it's only a ten percent match, and so we'd be out fifty thousand to get four hundred fifty thousand to do some major improvements to the courthouse. And so, uh, that's what this is about. And there's several things over there, we all know, that we've been wanting to get done, and so this will give us the funds, uh, to do that. And, uh, so this is a, a very positive, uh, development for us. As we think about moving forward, we'll make some improvements with the, the restroom facilities over there, and also the windows that continue to leak. And, uh, it's just several other things that, that we'll be able to do, and, uh, and only if it'll cost us fifty thousand. That's what, that's what this is, and again, it's a grant through, that, uh, will be administered by Northwest Development District. Anybody got any questions?
Anybody have any questions for the mayor?
When will you know if you, uh, get the grant?
I don't think it'd be too much longer, but we're, we're doing all the things I've asked for, we're getting the, uh, figures together on the projects. I like, they want to know kind of the projects, so we'll get some estimates on that and stuff, so once we get all that final stuff turned in. It's, it's pretty much, uh, the way they, the way they spoke to us about it, it's almost a sure thing we'll get it. It's just a matter of getting everything.
If we get it, will the improvements come back to us to be approved, don't let these be done at the courthouse, or, or that be done?
We think so, yeah, I mean, we'll.
You'd have to go through that committee.
Yeah, you go.
I'll be working.
The courthouse immediately, to be able to see it, so.
First.
That good reason from the meat. That good reason from the meat.
Anybody got any other questions?
Motion made by Mr. Sinclair in the second, by Mr. Jauer. Any other questions?
Mr. Bondra.
Mr. Bondra.
Mayor, this five hundred thousand dollar grant, do we have any idea how much money we're talking about for the pro, project? And will there be any, what's the chance of an overrun and all that kind of, you know?
We're not planning to do that. We're gonna recommend the things that will total up to that amount, but we're not going over.
We're not going to go over. Okay.
We're, we're getting the estimates ahead of time, and we're just gonna fit in products within what we afford to do.
So if we wanna do seven, if it's gonna cost seven fifty, we're gonna stop at five hundred?
Yes.
All right.
We think we, we'll be, we think we'll be at five hundred for the last eight.
I know it needs to be done, so I, yeah.
Yeah, this is something we've been thinking of, and this is a great opportunity for us to be able to get it done without costing.
I'm just going back to what we just talked about with this highway, you know, all of a sudden you say, we can do it for this, and the next thing we turn around, oh, I'm sorry, but it is a million, you know, yeah. So I'm, I wanna be careful with that.
Right. Yeah, we thought, we thought of that too, so, uh, thank you.
Anybody else? No questions? Go ahead and vote. Eighteen yes, nine opposed, motion case.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
Notary?
The list of notaries for Oba, Oba, of October twentieth is, Ms. Michelle Bing is asking to be reappointed. She's employed by Bank Three. Molly Ann Kropman is rea, reappointment, um, she's self-employed, lives here in Oba County. Melinda, I'm not gonna say her name right. Um, Anew, appointment, she works at Warner Law Firm. Carrie Potts, reappointment, First Choice Farm and Lawn. Ms. Betty Wally, reappointment for the town of Bumpick. And John Warner the Third, reappointment. And John Warner III, reappointment for Warner Law Firm. That's our list for the October meeting.
You heard the nominees, the motion to approve these.
Shane Sandberg.
Sanders and Mr. Cunningham made the six. Any questions about any? No questions, go ahead and vote. Eighteen yes, ton of votes, motion carries.
Okay. Don't worry.
You didn't put your name in, so I don't know who you are. Be the virtual unknown. Robert has asked for the floor.
Well, I know the vote we had, I just wanna make myself clear. I voted no because I thought no meant no, you know.
I was too. Too late?
This dummy from South Fulton. No means no, you know. No, we're not here, so I just wanted to know, uh.
It's too late?
I know it.
Ain't done or ever and ever. What's done is done.
Yeah.
We appreciate you.
I can change it next meeting. You can change it in a minute. Chairman? Yes, you can.
Chairman.
Yeah, I don't think anybody listening, but I'm from South Fulton.
By the way, man, I voted the right way. So I'm from South Fulton.
Well, certain people from South Fulton.
There you go. It's okay if I was over once, folks.
That's right, that's right.
I know, but I didn't want to.
I couldn't make the rest of it.
Okay, now we're ready for the highway superintendent.
Good morning.
Good morning.
You have seen a report, we have any questions? Comments about anything?
You're doing a good job.
I appreciate it, we're trying.
How many miles of paving have you done in twenty twenty-five?
This fiscal year, because we didn't start till after July fourth, we have done about ten miles so far, so by the end of spring, depending on where the recession is, we're running eighteen mile mark.
How many miles did we typically pave prior to owning our own hot mix plant?
Five to seven.
So pretty, we have increased efficiency by owning the hot mix plant?
Yeah, we pay a whole lot more, but it also ties this up from doing a whole lot of other work, too.
Right.
I mean, that's kind of its pros and cons, it's great time that we need it, but it's an expense. In two years, that plan is pretty much run through six million dollars. So, and we hadn't even started the maintenance part of it, you know, it's still a new plan, so whoop, keep passing kicked in on that plan, yeah.
Yeah.
So this is something, think about it in the future. Yeah, we're paving a lot more than we used to. We used to do about six, seven miles a year, and I'd like to aim at fifteen to twenty a year. It's more realistic, that gives us time to get our other work done also. I can't, if I spend my entire summer paving, then we're not patching, we're not doing anything else that we need to do.
I do have a question. Lighting on I sixty-nine, have you gone and looked into that anymore?
Kentucky put that into their plans when they submitted that. That's how they got their lighting done. If Tennessee had submitted it in their plans, we would have lighting on all fronts.
Any more questions for the superintendent?
So if that, lighting is not in the plan, like you stated, is there any way to get it?
I doubt we'll get it free of cost. Now, yes, we can get lighting, but the question now is gonna be, what's it gonna cost Obine County to do this? And I don't think it really should because this is a federal state highway, so it all falls back on land.
So we could make a request out of this body to T-DOT for lighting on the interchanges.
Yeah, I think.
I'll even say no.
Right.
I think that's the best way to do it.
So I make a motion that we, our county attorney writes up a letter.
That's what I said.
Requesting T-DOT to add lighting to the I sixty-nine interchanges for the safety of the constituents of Obine County and those travel through Obine County.
Say, it'll carry more weight that comes from the mayor, but I'll certainly work with him.
Oh, yeah, that's what I mean. Chat GPT thing or something.
Yeah. They like mayors, friends, they like more.
Boys, no, please.
No, no, come here. Boys, vote. And Mr. Eagle?
So our motion was requesting T-DOT to add lighting to I sixty-nine for the safety of our constituents in Obine County.
And those travel through Obine County, yeah.
Those travel through Obine County.
And motion by Sinclair, second by Madoff.
Any more discussion on that? Go ahead and vote.
We're gonna always vote.
Just pull it over to the voice booth. On the papers, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are you ready to come rechange your, your statement?
Next meeting.
Next meeting, thanks.
Now we're ready for the county attorney of Obine County.
Good morning. Glad to announce no new lawsuits have been filed since we met last month. When I leave this courtroom, I'm headed across the street to another courtroom where I've got a motion to dismiss pending on one suit pending against Obine County. Someone, one of you asked last month, how many lawsuits are pending against Obine County right now? There are seven lawsuits pending. One is a slip and fall case. If there are any damages to be awarded, it's gonna be paid by our insurance. There'll be no county funds used for that. The other one's a dog bite case. Again, if any damages are awarded, it'll be paid by our insurance company. One is, it's a harassment issue. It's a weak, the attorney that filed has almost apologized for a suit that we expected to be dismissed eventually. Three of the, three of the seven lawsuits are just filed by inmates against the county without an attorney even representing them. So, one inmate claimed he was depressed and attempted suicide, and that's somehow the county's fault, and we should pay damages for that, so we expect that one to be dismissed. The other one, one of the three that's filed by inmates is the one I anticipate getting dismissed today. And then the other third, again, we don't even understand the lawsuit, but he says that Judge Parron got his sentence wrong, but somehow the county owed him damages because of that. So, we don't expect any problems with getting that one dismissed either. So that only leaves us with the, the only lawsuit that has any significance monetary wise is that lawsuit that Green, the current owners of Green Acres filed, saying that we caused their property to flood. And I've shared with you my opinions on that lawsuit in the past. I will get into that at the end of the day, but those are the lawsuits currently pending against Obine County. If you have any questions about those or any other issues, I'll be glad to.
What is the status of that, for big, no grain acres?
It's just dragging very slowly, proceeding, excuse me, proceeding very slowly through what's called discovery, where we're through written documents, we're making them provide any information or documentation. They think that they can rely upon at a trial to support their claim.
There's been no deposition yet, right?
Uh, no, not the, not the Green Acres case. All right, thank you all.
Thank you, sir.
I have something to report.
What's your name?
I don't know, put it in the pan.
Mr. Yar, do you have something?
Wanted to update the commission on a meeting that some of us attended in Knoxville. It's the annual Fall Conference for the Tennessee County Commission Association, Highway Supervisors, and the mayors. One of the big issues that was brought up is this real estate tax that had been bouncing back and forth for two years now. The governor finally has seen fit to listen to it and may have it in his budget, he may not. We don't know. What is important? And they stressed this very strongly, that we contact our legislators about it. And that was laying over and over and over, that we need to tell them and tell them to support this. So that's the real estate tax. I think it's gonna bring in a snippet amount of money back to us. In other words, if you sell a piece of property in, in Obine County and there's a tax, well, the state got it all. I don't know what state did to get it all. It's our county courthouse, it's our county people that does it. I don't know how that happened, but it did. And we're asking for half of it. And I think we deserve at least half of it. So, contact your legislators.
Thankfully, I figured it was about three hundred thousand we could get back.
I think it's a little bit more than that now, four hundred, I think now, four hundred. Now, the second issue that was brought up, and it was about some changes in the uniform highway law. There's a lot of things that are in there that are bad. One being in emergency management. If we need assistance in the cities, or even if we have a tornado come through and you've got people trapped in their own homes, the way the law's written right now, the highway department cannot assist because they can't get off of the county roads. Well, that needs to be changed during a state of emergency. So we instructed our man to find a bill sponsor and get that changed, and had very positive things about that. The other thing was, I wish in November, we would look at sending a resolution or some type of paperwork to our elected officials. That would be Representative Grills or Hurt and Senator Stevens. Get this, something changed about where we can't pave our own parking lots and use our own asphalt. Now, I'm not gonna go into that again, let's just establish that we can't do that. So, I hope we can go through the proper committees, get that resolution adopted, and send it to them and ask them to sponsor something. Something can be done. So that's the other thing. The last thing was, we had a presentation by NACO, that's the National Association of County Organization that's nationwide, which I thought we remembered, but we're not, that gave us an update on the future of FEMA. Say, is that important? Yeah, you better believe it's important. There is legislation now in the House to send that organization or that agency back as a cabinet-level position. It's being fought in the Senate. It needs to be under the President, it don't need to be under Homeland Security. It's a, it has nothing to do with Homeland Security when you're looking at assisting the public and the private entities. It's just another way of government controlling money to you. It has been shot down that they're gonna send block grants back to the states about that. What they're looking at is a streamline where FEMA has a hundred and twenty days to work directly with the counties on disasters. They have a hundred and twenty days when you apply for assistance to say yes or no. We'll no longer be going through the state all the time. I think that's a wonderful thing. Everything starts local, and that's what the problem is. It goes to here, to the state, and to the, it's just, it's just a merry-go-round. So, there's some good legislation being prepared in Washington about that that hopefully will give us a better understanding. So, we had a good meeting, everybody, I think we had some good classes, and I just wanted to give us a report that that's what we come up with. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Appreciate your report, that was very good, thank you. Anybody else have anything?
I have a question for Danny.
Yes, sir.
Danny, is there anything that we can do as a body to move forward that, so we can use our paving land to pack for our parking lots?
Yes, I think that's, we've got to get, we've gotta get this resolution to these representatives. To say, "You need to file a bill, a private act or whatever." We have an asphalt plan, and we keep hearing we can't use it because it's the, the uniform traffic law says we can't. But there's things in that that we can, can do. It's, you know, right now, we can, we can't pave our parking lots, but we could buy the asphalt from somebody else and then pave it. Well, that's just ridiculous.
Yeah.
So there's things that need to be, as if it's probably gonna be a private act, if they'll allow us to do it, because I don't think they'll change the law. The highway, what do you call those people that are like?
Road builders.
Road builders association, they don't, they just not going, they'll change the law across the whole state, and I think it's gonna have to be attacked that way. And we'll talk more about this when we go back up on the, on some bill. We're gonna try to get a bill introduced and get the Tennessee.
So there is some momentum for this?
Yes, there is. And we're gonna get, we're gonna talk again to the Tennessee Commissioner Association, which are sixteen hundred members across the state. Maybe they will back it. I don't know if the mayor association will back it or not, you never know with them, so. But I know our mayor will back it. But that's, that, yes, there is momentum, but I think we need to push hard this time to get this done. Just out of common sense. That's, this is all it is, really, is common sense.
Yeah. I can tell you that Representative Grills is on board with us, and he's, Representative Burke will be, and I don't know if you're about to hear this, but I know.
If you know, do you have some? I have a question, and I don't know who it needs to be directed, but what's the status of the renovations over on Fourth Street at the former jail building that the county bought for records storage? I understand there's some work going on, but I don't know whether it's near completion or just started or what.
I'll give you a little update. Yeah, it's coming along good, and it'll be, it'll be after the first of the year or so, but we'll be able to start moving things in there. It's coming along real good.
So you think after the first of the year, some of the records can be moved?
Yes, sir.
After the first?
Yeah, sometime, sometime not too far.
Just around the corner, okay, good.
What kind of renovations are having to be done to it?
Well, there were some places we were opening up so we can have good circulation there between the, you know, the different compartments where we're gonna have the records. There's some, they got some of the drop ceiling, and just things like that just need to be explained. I think we had to do some work for it, I think with some fire, you know.
So where's the, where's the money for those renovations? Where's that coming from?
We've got a special fund.
Yeah, that fund, that, we have that fund, that records fund.
The records, yeah, that's right, okay, I haven't thought about that.
We, um.
We got about, what, four hundred thousand or so sent in there now?
I'm not sure what it is, but you, you know, articles, you know?
Well, it's just a half of the winged now. Yeah, because the mall's building out of it.
Yeah, we paid for the building out of it, plus renovations, so we use a lot of it, we'll get more.
Well, you don't use it for anything anyway, do you?
I'm sorry.
We don't really use that money for anything.
No, no, it worked out excellent to have it for that, that's.
We do use it to pay for the software.
Do you?
It's not like that.
Anybody else?
Motion to adjourn.
Having a motion to adjourn. On the way to adjourn, let's say aye. You don't believe it.